Call to order, the January thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five Foxfire Village Monthly Work Session. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, wait, let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Warren Morgan, and that there are people in the audience. Any changes to the budget?
I mean, uh.
We have some of those.
Any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Wait, I want to talk about it for a very long time.
And pool bathrooms.
Park trails.
Just give an update.
And pool?
Yeah.
Pool bathrooms. Any other changes, additions, deletions?
Oh, wait, 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 I do want to talk about the septic and the park.
Anything else? Any other changes or deletions?
No, mine are just updates anyways.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, first item on the agenda is a budget amendment for the pool septic tank, which is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is a repair that was unforeseen and unexpected.
Need a new septic tank.
So I'd like to get a motion to approve Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Two Zero Two Five Dash Zero One.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Is that a new tank you put in?
They're going to, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mary, do you want the copies?
For some reason, I don't have a copy.
Here, you can have mine, I got that.
Oh, I got it, never mind, I got it, I got it, I got it.
I put it in your box.
Next item on the agenda is Councilman Gilroy Capital Trust Update.
Yeah, I sat down with John Frackel about now this week, and he went over the new interest rates, what it's gonna look like, stuff like that. We'll run at about four point four through about June or so. Then he thinks there's gonna be a plot down to three point nine. Who, twenty twenty-six looks like three point four, twenty twenty-seven, three point one, and neutral is three percent, and that's kind of the long-term forecast, okay? And that's awesome.
Now, you said June would be three, about what?
Well, if you look at the, if you keep, they go plot, you know, all the Federals and their guys, their plot shows it will be about three point nine. Now, that doesn't happen until the Free Open Market Committee actually gets together and votes, but that's kind of what the feeling is, which is great, that was good info.
What are we at now? Four point nine.
Four.
Oh, we're at four point nine, so that's good.
Yeah.
So after, I'm sorry, after June, it was?
Three point nine.
Okay, yeah.
For the last half of this, for the last half of twenty twenty-five, this is calendar year, not fiscal year, twenty twenty-five, then three point four moving into twenty twenty-six, three point one moving into twenty twenty-seven. And then, I mean, I guess maybe I knew this, but they are very liquid. Twenty-five percent of their liquidity is held in one day, fifty percent is held in one week. So when I bring up this next thing, if we need to move money, it's not gonna be a big deal. But we're holding an awful lot of money at First Bank to the tune of almost one point two million dollars, which is way too much. That needs to go.
What's the interest rate there? It's very low. It's maybe four basis, yeah, it's like point four, but so we can move it.
Yeah, but he made a really interesting suggestion. You know, there are times of the year when we're more flush with cash than others, like after we get a big property tax hit and stuff like that. So what he suggested was, look at your last twelve months of bills, which is fine, maybe throw out the high and low and average them, and then almost use the capital trust as a sweep fund. You know, like, you, banks a lot, or companies a lot of time will have a sweep, you know, if I'm over this month, this much, you know, sweep it every day. We would do that every day. But I would rather take more money and put it into the capital trust and earn some interest, even if it's only for two or three months. You're still gonna end up with extra interest, and an extra twenty thousand's worth in interest in a year is a lot. So I'm gonna get those numbers together, I'm gonna go over them with Jody, okay? And I'll give you an idea of what we're gonna do. I mean, it'll be whatever the average shows at First Bank plus. I mean, there'll be a healthy, there'll be a healthy pad on top of that, but there's no reason for us not to take advantage of that.
Because we can pull it out, I mean, in any time, right?
That's why I said, their liquidity is seventy, I mean, their liquidity is very, very high. So if we needed to move money overnight, as long as we put it in there by four o'clock on an ACH transfer, they'll move it. So I am pretty comfortable doing that. Okay?
You gotta do it.
Because we don't have to keep a minimum at First Bank, right?
Well, I think, I think really, to make it easy, we should kind of pick a number like five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And keep, keep that much in First Bank.
And the rest goes.
And then the rest just goes.
Well, I wanna see what the numbers actually look like.
You just have to be careful of somebody forgetting to move money, or you don't want checks, you don't wanna cut it so close.
That can happen, and we won't cut it that close. We won't cut it that close. But as soon as he said it, I was like, oh, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, what if we held an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there for four months? You know, that's still four point four percent, two hundred and fifty grand.
A lot of money.
So that's what I wanted to share with you. We'll be starting budgeting in the month of February. That's just not on the agenda, but that will happen. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good going.
There's been a lot of talk about this down zoning.
No, you missed him.
Special.
Oh, special events, I'm sorry. I went through and made some changes to the special events ordinance in our code. And I think you all got a copy of it some time ago. These were, this was just my shot at it. And to recap, it starts out about the consumption of alcohol. And basically, I think the consumption of alcohol should be in its own, it should be in its own section.
I agree.
Because we're not allowing it in any events, so we should just, so that was why that was highlighted in yellow, that this information should come out of special events and go into its own section of consumption of alcohol. That no person shall consume, serve, drink, wine, beer, whiskey, or alcoholic beverages of any kind on the village public streets, boulevards, or alleys, public rights of ways, streetways, rocky trails, paths. And that there's no, there's no alcohol within fifty feet of the police department, the village fire department, the swimming pool, and its facilities. No person shall consume.
Wait, can I stop you?
Yeah.
Did you, I was just gonna say, you need.
Pickleball courts and park. If we're gonna redo this section, I think we need to rework it a little bit. If we're gonna make this a separate section, because we do need the pickleball courts, we need the park, the park shelters.
Well, if we say the park, and the park is the park.
That's the park, that's the whole park.
Because we already said that there's no alcohol in the park.
Correct.
Right.
Then I would add the pickleball courts.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, when it said, I knew it, when it said opportunit, facilities, I'm assuming that's the thing that.
And we probably oughta figure out where fifty feet from the village hall is, because if I, if I go across the road and I stand, I'm, I'm not, if I go across the road and I stand there, I bet you I'm within fifty feet.
But you can't, you can't drink on, on the streets.
On the streets. On the streets.
I could be standing on a lot across the road. I mean.
Well, then you can drink if it's private property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's not get that picky, come on.
I understand, it doesn't, fifty feet, I, what does that even mean?
Well, what we can just say is that there's, there's no alcohol with.
On village-owned properties.
On village-owned property.
So we can take the within fifty feet out.
Yeah, that's kinda weird.
And just say, police department, village fire department, village swimming pool, and pickleball. Or we could just say village-owned properties.
That's the simplest way, right?
Why don't we just do that? All village-owned properties.
So there's no drinking at the well site, so not at all.
They have to tell him, you have to tell Warren.
Warren, get those people out of there. That just makes it easy, and then when we build a community center several years from now, then we'll have to go back and readdress that.
And where are you gonna put that, Mary?
I don't know. I, I don't even know that I wanna do it.
Okay, so that's all village-owned properties. And then, and then the next item C, we can just delete, because we don't need to have that there.
And you got rid of D.
And D is, right, so that would be our alcohol policy.
Okay, so that's gonna have its own article, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, moving on to the mention of outdoor special events. And the first item is a definition of a special event, which are, for purposes of this article, fairs, festivals, shows, concerts, and other events of limited duration that result in substantial gatherings of people outside of enclosed buildings, and that are unlike customary or usual activities of the location where the event occurs. Everybody okay with the definition?
Yeah, it's, it's, that's, I looked at Pinehurst, Aberdeen, Southern Pines, that's fairly consistent across the board with them. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So right now, special outdoor events may take place in the Village Green Park. And then it says, if the special event will not material endanger the public health or safety, and will be in harmony with the area with which it's located, and will not unreasonably disrupt or interfere with the flow of traffic or the rights of adjacent surrounding property owners, and the event adheres to all rules of the Village Green Park. Yes. Do we wanna leave that in?
Yes. Yes.
Well, here's, here's gonna be my question, and I may be the devil's advocate if we get through this whole thing, having lived in Chicago, where people had special events that were absolutely positive and ridiculous in our neighborhood, but who's gonna decide that? Who decides whether an event, well, I don't think, but is in harmony with the area in which it's located, and will not unreasonably disrupt or interfere with flow of traffic, that's easy, or the rights of adjacent or surrounding property owners? Who's gonna decide that?
Well, I thought you wanted to leave that in. I thought you made a comment that we should leave that in, the last time you even talked about this.
We do need to leave it in, but I'm asking the question, who's gonna decide?
Well, we typically don't ask other than, I know the FPOA might have events, and they, they wanna have a carnival, a kid's carnival, and, or a carnival of any kind.
I'm not trying to be, I, I'm not trying to be destructively picky, I just, I just wonder somehow, if somebody goes to have an event in the park, and it sounds like, wow, we've never had that before, or, wow, that's a really big tension putting up, you know, who's responsible for putting it up, taking it down, stuff like, there has to be.
Whoever holds a special event is responsible for their own event, not us.
I understand that.
So they're responsible. What we do after any event that takes place at the park, and that's usually where our events take place.
Well, that's the only place that they take place right now.
It is monitored after the event, to see if they've obviously taken all their garbage, if it's cleaned up, blah, blah, blah. So anyone who has their own event has to clean up after themselves, and if they don't.
I'm not concerned about that.
Okay, then what's your question?
Like, so what if somebody erects, they have to have liability insurance when they have an event at the park?
Yes, they do.
Okay, do we need to put that in here someplace, that they're required to get liability insurance?
They, what we call it is a special event insurance policy.
I think somewhere that needs to be in here.
And, and.
It's, Aberdeen has it.
Let me, let me think about this for a minute before I answer that question, okay? Because it would really depend on the event, okay?
No, I, that's exactly, that's exactly my point.
Correct.
You go up there and have a graduation party, no big deal.
You don't need it.
You go out there, you have a bouncy ball, you have this, you have that.
No, no, timeout, no bouncy ball.
Whatever. I mean, but you have, you have things in the park that someone else comes in and sets up, and stuff like that. I just wonder if we don't need to have some statement about potential liability insurance.
Well, let me, let me backtrack here a little bit, like, if there is a, and, and the FPOA has had events where they have food trucks. The village requires them, and so does the health department, they have to have their insurance. We get a copy of that here in the village, so anything happens, we know they, they have insurance, the, the food trucks. The FPOA has their own special event, well, they have their own liability insurance.
Right, right.
Which we are named as an additional insured, so they're already covered.
What if somebody had a party up there, had a food truck, and didn't tell us?
Oh, I'll tell you, we'd know.
How would we know?
Believe me, I go up there when they have parties.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but what I'm saying is.
Well, then, you know what, maybe that should be determined in, when they.
Apply for the event, that's what I think, maybe that's what I'm trying to get at. I mean, maybe, and I don't know what our rental form looks like, and I'm not trying to make it unreasonably difficult.
It's not in there.
But if you're, maybe that's the way to do it, so that we're like, hey, you can have a food truck, but then you need to have some kind of.
This is what you need to provide to the village.
So that we don't get surprised, and someone who's rented the park doesn't get upset.
Well, and that's one of the things I've said to the office down. When someone is renting the park, we need to ask what the event is for. We have that right to ask.
Wow.
And I want that on that form. What is this for? Birthday party, okay.
How many people do you expect?
Right.
Because that's another thing that should impact liability insurance. A couple of them require a special permit if you have more than fifty people at an event, stuff like that. And I'm, I'm not, we don't need to get all picky about it, but special events, if they're not well-defined and the process isn't well-defined, I think have the ability to get more complicated than we realize if something goes awry.
Well, and I think, again, asking, are you going, you know, what is your event for, blah, blah, blah? Depending on the number of people, I think that's a good idea. If you're gonna have twenty people, we don't give.
No big deal, you're gonna have five hundred, I'm gonna have, I mean, that's a little different.
No, that is different.
Even, even a hundred is different, that's a lot of people.
Well, exactly, and that's one of the reasons the FPOA has their liability insurance, because they do have more people at their events. And so, yeah, we, we can look at the application that they fill out, and put those items, maybe we can talk about it the next work session, and put those items on the application.
Now, on the application now, is it asked for the liability insurance?
No.
It should be on there.
Well, that's what we're talking about, adding.
Yeah, I know, to make sure it's on.
Yeah.
But yet, you have to, what you have to do is you have to say when it's required and when it's not.
Correct.
And, and.
And maybe we need to spend some more time defining that.
And as far as erecting a tent, I don't think we would even allow that.
No.
No, we let them put up tents.
If you're, if you're having a wedding up there, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like a tent, it's one of those covers, they usually, you know, the four. Even the FPOA puts up little ones, but yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
It's the bouncy houses that I've had added to, we, we will not allow any bouncy, we're not covered with bouncy houses with the liability period for the village.
Yeah, they're, they're not really.
So they're not allowed on any of the village-owned property.
Okay, so on this, so we need to add language, because there aren't, there's no, add language.
I'll get a copy of the application for, look at that.
For insurance.
Okay, and getting back to where Mary was going regarding unreasonably disruptive, you know, they're up there blaring the music or whatever, and there are neighbors up there, right next door. And.
I can hear them, mine is. They still have to, they still have to adhere to all the village ordinances.
Correct.
And we have noise ordinances, and we have disruptive ordinances, and, you know, we had an event on Wedgwood that turned into a fiasco that was contained.
Was that?
Yeah, it was just a.
Wasn't on Wedgwood, was it?
Yeah, it was in the Phoebe Earl on Wedgwood, I thought.
The golf house?
Yeah.
The where?
The golf house.
No, that was on.
That's not on Wedgwood.
That big blowout party where all those people got arrested? That was.
I didn't hear anything about this.
Oh, yeah, that was a couple of years ago.
Oh, okay, well, then, I thought it was recent.
It was a couple of years ago.
It was two or three years ago.
I wasn't aware.
Chappers, yeah. Anyway, okay, okay. I took everything else out, because it, it starts to talk about alcoholic beverages and it's just not, it's just not applicable if they're gonna be used in park, village property. Now, now it has regulation of special events on private property.
It's a little different.
And for me, the only thing I think we should be saying is that you can have a special event on your property, you just have to adhere, because we can't, we can't.
You can't stop it.
Mandate someone from having a wedding or having something on their property. They still have to adhere to village ordinances. And they can't be disrupting traffic, they can't be, you know, it's just.
So I think A is really the only thing we keep in there.
Well, special, special events, special outdoor events may take place on private property. Special event will not materially endanger public health and safety, will not, will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, and will not unreasonably disrupt or interfere with the flow of traffic or rights of adjacent or surrounding property owners. I mean, they could have an event at, at the golf course, and, you know.
You can't stop that.
It's still private property, and I think everyone thinks about people's homes, but we have, I mean, the store could have a special event, the golf club could, and I think, and again, they don't have to get a permit for the special event, but if you're gonna have one, you have to be a bit courteous to the, to the town.
Yeah, I think I'm good. I just, I've just had such a bad experience with this kind of stuff. You just never know who's gonna, and I'm not saying we have residents who would do this, but I think if you're gonna have like, you know, a hundred and some people at your private residence, that's your choice, but I think that you need a temporary use permit to do that. So everybody's aware, doesn't have to cost anything, and we don't need to make it onerous, but if you're gonna set stuff up in your backyard, I think it needs to be done within the setbacks, you know, stuff like that, so you're not right on top of your neighbors, and it just depends, I mean.
I just think that's overcomplicating it right now.
Yeah, I do, because I'll tell you what, and, and you know most of the people around here, anytime they're having any type of party or whatever, they're talking to their neighbors, hey, we're having a wedding here, hope you guys don't mind, hey, you're also invited. I, I don't think that would be an issue, you know, and, and like you said, why are we going to get to that point where you have to have a temporary use permit, really?
I mean, if, I just think that unless something occurs where we need to change this ordinance.
That's why we don't force it.
And that's fine, but I don't think up to this point we need, we need to do that.
I just don't want.
The only concern I would have is parking on the road.
Well, again, you still can't disrupt the flow of traffic.
Correct, and it's in here, so, you know, you have a hundred people coming to your house, where are they parking?
Side of the road.
Well, okay, maybe that's kind of my point, because if we do, let's say somebody does, and they're repeating the, if we had known about it in advance, then it would have been easy for the police to go out and say, look, you guys can't park here, so before it got to be an issue, it already would have been taken care of. I don't, we can leave it the way it is, and then when something triggers it, and we have to come back and revisit it, we can revisit it.
I think we leave it.
Leave it.
The next statement is, special events must adhere to all federal, state, and local laws and ordinances.
Yeah.
On B, it's the last sentence of B.
I think you could put that under A.
Just put it under A?
Yeah.
Okay?
Just shift it up there, and then all you have is A.
And then the rest of it is moot, in my opinion. Now, this, these are my changes, but I just.
Well, I'll tell you what, the applicant confirms an understanding that by signing the document, the applicant is required to be in attendance.
But there's no applicant, there's no application for a special event.
No.
Because again, when you, there is no application.
Right.
At this point.
It was off.
You can tell I'm not a big a special events person on private property, I've just been scorched too many times.
But let me ask, has it been an issue?
No, not, no, not here, but you know what, in the past three or four years, we've had a lot of issues here that we've never had before.
I know that, but has something like this been an issue? Okay.
Couple times up at the park, I was ready to go tell them to take their music and.
Well, that's at the park, that's.
True, yeah.
Village-owned property.
Well, and again, neighbors at the park are that disturbed by whatever is going on, they need to call the police.
And let the police go over and say, hey, can you turn the music down?
Actually, it was based off a movie night, and it was really bad.
Really?
Well, yeah. It was bad night, it was TJ, it wasn't even me.
It was loud?
Face carries.
Well, you, you.
It's, it's, it's a mute point, it's.
I give the people that live up by the park a lot of credit, because.
Yeah, I really do.
Yeah.
I wouldn't live up there.
Okay, so at this point, I think we're done with the, you wanna add language for, does someone wanna take a crack at adding the language for the insurance?
I will.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute, I thought we were gonna do that based on the form.
It's gonna be on the form.
Okay, so that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, as long as it's on the form, you know what we might do is put something in there about the form.
Well, I was just gonna say that, do we want to say that special events would require the rental of, of the park pavilions?
Wait a minute, this is on private property.
No, we're back to.
Oh, we're back, oh, back to. During the page.
Private property.
We're talking about the language for the insurance, and we said it was gonna be on the form, but this does not mention the form, and maybe we should add that.
Yeah, just something about.
Park pavilion must be rented for special events, yes?
Well, and, and.
And then in that process.
And attach, a lot of them attach a copy of the form, right, to the, I guess that doesn't make sense, but yeah.
No.
There has to be language in there that says, you know, they'll be required to fill out the event registration form.
Well, no, it's called, what is it called? It's, it's not an event registration form, it's a park, it's a rental form, park.
You know, I'll grab them, they're, they're handy.
So to have a special event at the park, you need to rent the park.
Yeah.
And then the form will then instruct them on what they need to do.
On the, by the, yes.
Okay. All right, we'll make some changes and get another draft for finalization.
Yeah, see, they all have rules on the back regarding hours, parking, the alcohol, that's coming off of this form. Animals, noise, excessive, excessive noise such as loud music is prohibited and caused for removal. Permitted events may include music and other noise-producing activities per permit, that's gonna have to come off.
Yeah.
Litter, okay, grills and pavilions, trails, bathrooms, emergencies, damage problems.
What's the name of this form?
It's called Village Green Request for Users of Pavilion.
Does it have on there the expected number of people at the event?
No, and that should be on there.
Yep, that should be on there, and then just some statement about liability, I mean, we gotta figure out how we're gonna use, do liability insurance, because a lot of people don't even think about that.
Okay. All right, so we'll make some changes, and we'll get another draft for our council meetings that will.
I'll work that, get that approved. All right. I'll work on that.
Any other comments for now? Okay, moving on again to down zoning. A law that was recently passed, which were amendments to General Statute One Sixty B Dash Six Oh One, referenced down zoning, and it's a very, it's a very unclear wording in the law. I went to a, or I was in on a webinar for those, School of Government, talking about these changes to zoning. And the way this law is written, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of comments about this law needs to be either repealed, or rewritten, or.
It's pretty bad.
It's very, very questionable what they're talking about. What they did is they did create this kind of a evaluation to figure out if you're, if you are down zoning something, because now they're saying you cannot do anything for down zoning now. So they gave us a simple list of questions for evaluating down zonings, and this is something that.
No, we don't have this from you, do we?
Yeah.
Do you?
I got, I put one in your mailbox, oh, no, I didn't.
No, I do not have one, okay, no problem.
I sent it to you, I sent it in the.
Sorry. Oh, you want anything, okay, wait a minute, hold on, let me get it, I got it.
Yeah, it was in the email with the agenda.
I got it, never mind, my bad.
Okay, so, there's basically this checklist, and this needs to go to our zoning people, so that they know what they can and can't do at this time. You have to ask yourself, is it zon- downzoning? Is the change an amendment to the zoning text or map? If yes, continue to the next question. Okay. Does the text, map, or amendment reduce development density? If yes, it's downzoning. So if you're reducing development in any way, whether you're reducing the uses, um, available uses, um, it's considered downzoning. It's not just density any longer. Does the text or the map amendment limit a use that was previously permitted and/or reduce the number of uses allowed? And then they're saying there's ambiguity as to whether it's substantive, numeric, or both. And if you are doing that, you're downzoning. So if you change something to, that's something that was recreational and, um, residential, right? It had two uses, okay. And you're saying, no, we wanna change this to commercial, even though it could be a denser.
That makes no sense.
That's downzoning. That's what they define, that's what they defined as downzoning in the law.
This was a rider too, this was really.
And no one's saying where it came from, it just appeared supposedly.
Somebody knows where it came from.
Right. Does the text or map amendment affect property in a non-residential zoning district? And if it's yes, it, it's, it's likely downzoning.
It's likely not a downzoning.
No, it's no.
It's yes. If it's no, it is likely not a downzoning. So they're basically saying you can't make any zoning changes at all.
And that's kind of what they're saying.
I mean, pretty much that's what it is.
The only thing you can do is expand zoning usage. Expand the number of zoning usage. You can't take anything away without adding more in. And if you do take something away, you have to get the buy-in from every person, every property owner in that zone.
Sure, I'm glad ours is done.
For the text or map amendments affecting non-residential zoning districts, does the text or map amendment create a non-conforming situation? So if you create a non-conforming situation, it's considered downzoning. So if you now want to change, um, you need to, you need to have a, a, a impervious sidewalk.
Non-conforming, I mean, that's just insane. That is insane, because non-conforming can be thrown up for all kinds of things.
Any, anything that you change and there's a property that isn't just like that would be non-conforming.
But it doesn't make any sense. I mean, that really doesn't make any sense.
Well, I'm sure they didn't have anybody from planning and zoning help them with this. Is that obvious?
And if it is downzoning of any, any one of these categories, so it's reduced usages, non-conforming situations, um, or density restrictions, it's downzoning and you need written consent from every affected property owner in the town. It's not even in the area, it's anyone. So, this is what they left us with. Which to me is, you can't do any zoning.
And they don't define affected property owners.
Well, it's anyone who's in that same zoning district. Anyone who has that same zoning district. So if you're an RS thirty and you make a change to RS thirty that would create a non-conforming property, all the RS thirty property owners need to be contacted and they need to agree.
They won't even know what it is.
Yeah, they're meeting.
Holy moly.
So they're basically saying you can't, you can't make any changes.
Too bad this isn't on the league's top priority.
Yeah.
Right. So, planning and zoning needs to be aware of this for now. Again, there's a lot of changes that, I think a lot of people are in arms, and, and what they did say is, is that, um, we should write to our representatives and give them very specific reasons of how this is impacting, even things that, and don't forget, this was six months retroactive. So that if you had a development that was approved and even in process, it's now.
I'd sue the state so fast they'd make their heads spin.
It's now a problem. They've got to, you know, it's now a problem. So, there's a lot of places, and it's not just small towns. I think even some large towns are, have a big problem with this. But they're urging everyone to write to their legislators to, you know, make some noise about this.
I don't think we should write to them, I think we should call them.
I think we should visit them.
I think so too. I mean, Neil Jackson needs to sit down with us, and McGinnis needs to sit down with us. What, what were you thinking when you did this?
Well, what, what can we do?
Yeah.
We can't do anything to make our town what we think we, we can't fix any, we can't fix any issues.
More attractive, to help raise property value. And so if you have an issue in the town that really is legitimate, I mean, really, cause, you know, if you go through all of our lot, we definitely have some things that are non-conforming. And if somebody went to make another change that would make the lot non-conforming, which we can do under certain circumstances, you'd have to get permission from every single RS thirty property owner in the village?
And you're not even telling them that they have to fix non-conforming, you just have non-conforming.
Wow.
That's the way it's written, or that's the way they're, it's, it's muddied. So that's the, that's the issue, that it's, it's kind of muddied zoning in general.
Why did they do this?
Nobody knows.
It makes no sense.
Right. I don't know, I don't know where it came from.
What did it came from from there?
Yes, it did. So anyway.
Call Neil Jackson's office and ask them. Well, I mean, I would like to know where it came from.
Yeah. So, that's that. Our zoning people need to be, and you wanna, actually, I'll send it to.
Just send it to Tasha and just say, have, have.
I'll send it to Tasha. Yeah, have fun.
Are they working on anything that hits this though? I mean, our allowable use table's pretty tight. Our downzone is done.
I don't know if they were working on, the only thing that we were talking about was the commercial and recreational district changes.
And those, those properties already zoned that way, so it doesn't.
No, but there is some non-conforming situations.
Well, right, but if you go and it's recreational district, we only have one thing in recreational district.
Mm-hmm.
If it's commercial, I mean, if we had to get it, it's, we have, only have a handful of commercial landowners. That, those aren't too bad. It's the, it's the residential ones that would be the ridiculous.
Yeah. Okay, next item on the list, um, we talked about, um, considering FPOA events that you may want to get more involved in. And, um, Sally did give me a list. There are a couple of changes to the list that you've got. Um, the first one is the Easter egg hunt. It's really four twelve twenty twenty five as the date, and four thirteen twenty twenty five is the rain date.
Four twelve twenty twenty five and four thirteen?
Yes. And then when you look at the Fourth of July, the rain date, it's twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Just so you know.
I don't think they ever had, oh yeah, they do.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna throw this out there, are there any events that we think we may want to be a little more active in?
Define what you're talking about.
Well, a perfect example would be the Christmas tree lighting, like over there.
That's a good one. We should all be involved in that one.
I was gonna say that one.
Where maybe we could, um.
Cause it's done at the village hall.
Right, but maybe we could, uh, have a little bit more, um, when it comes to like hot chocolate or coffee, a little table with food. Um, maybe a little bit better lighting that we could bring in.
I would support that.
Um, uh, maybe a, maybe a DJ with a little bit of music, Christmas music, or sing some carols or whatever.
Well, and, and I know in the police department, they do have hot chocolate and coffee.
We ran out.
Ran out. Um.
I wasn't in charge.
So it is there, and they have a whole bunch of cookies. Um.
But there's a whole bunch of cookies.
Yeah, there was, there was a ton of cookies and stuff in there.
And they, they always have a lot of leftover cookies.
But you know, if, if you have even some, and actually having some of that stuff outside so people knew it went there, you know?
Well, it depends on.
And then a little bit better lighting.
That's one, because it happens on village property that the village council needs to be intimately involved in.
I think it would be, I, and again, we don't want to step on toes or, or, or anything.
No, you won't be stepping on, trust me.
What we wanna do is to work a little bit more cooperatively, um, you know, and bring maybe a little bit more resources to that. So I think the Christmas tree lighting would be a thing that we would want to.
Yeah, I think that would, uh, of all of them.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
I was thinking about maybe an east-west sixteen inch slow pitch softball tournament down in the park.
I thought that was a really good, I made that comment at the, um.
You did?
I did, at the FPOA.
So say that again, slow pitch.
Sixteen inch slow pitch.
What's sixteen inch?
Hit the ball.
It's a bigger softball.
Oh.
Normal's like that, goes a lot further, but a sixteen inch slow pitch.
So if you get hit with it, it doesn't hurt as much.
It's not gonna go as far.
And you hit it with a bat?
No, it's just like, it's a regular game.
Yeah.
It's just a bigger ball.
Do we, is the, is the, the left side of the lawn big enough to do that?
Yeah, if you go down the left side, go down to the bottom and hit up towards the.
The parking lot?
Yeah. There's plenty of shit.
That, that might be kinda fun.
Should be plenty of room, because that ball's not gonna go that far.
So it's called a sixteen inch.
Sixteen inch slow pitch softball.
Why don't we just play wiffle ball?
No, they don't go anywhere. They don't go anywhere. Slow pitch.
That's too early.
Slow pitch, what else?
That's a little sexist.
Balls.
We're not, we're not in, on your mic, are we?
Yeah, we are.
So east and west?
East, east-west, east.
East side of the road, Hoffman, and the west side.
You got it.
Kick.
So, so. When, when we say that.
Yeah, east over there.
Yeah, I'm getting competitive already.
What? Talking about the village council sponsoring it and running, what exactly are we talking about?
No, no, this is in conjunction with the FPOA.
No, I think if, if it's something that the FPOA would, would want.
Consider it, you can look them up.
Yeah.
You're targeting bat and the ball.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And bodies.
You know what? We'll, we'll have to have an ambulance there, especially like Don's plane.
Son's standby, right?
Probably, probably so.
I think that's not a bad.
Cause you know what, we better have the liability insurance going active.
I mean, we could even do like bocce ball too, bub. Bocce ball is.
We have done bocce ball before, haven't we?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we used to do that all the time in the park.
I'd rather do bocce ball than.
I would.
Okay, somebody explain bocce ball to me.
It's like lawn bowling.
You, you know, the only thing that I'm afraid of with this slow pitch ball game is, and again, you're gonna laugh, if we had older folks and Don, I know I picked on you, all I need is somebody running down the base, oh, oh, the back, my leg really fell down.
That's too bad. That's too bad.
Then I'm gonna have everybody sign waivers.
I would. I think everybody would.
They would.
No, seriously.
You don't have to participate.
Right, you don't have to.
You gotta have a little fun in this world. You can't be bossing about everything.
Play at your own risk.
That's right.
Well, I think that's, if, if the FPOA thinks it's something that they could get behind, um, you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I'm sure they will talk with the board.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to see us be a little more involved in the July fourth thing, because it involves the newcomers.
Right.
Yeah, I, oh, that's a good idea.
And we, and, and whoever gets up to speak, it would be good, this is my opinion, I'm not criticizing anybody, if we kind of injected the reason we're up there, you know, country, I mean, Fourth of July's a big deal. No one else has lasted as long as we have, and I think more of our participation there would be good.
Yeah, it's kinda sad when there's only like two or three or four of us up there, or.
Well, but I think that somebody from the village council should stand up and give a little speech. I mean, I just think that's, on July fourth, I think that's very important.
No, and I, I agree, because we don't, um, again, there's not, um, we don't do a lot.
Well, we have a lot of forums to do that in, so.
Right, and I'm gonna add one. Um, and this came up at the, the FPOA, uh, board meeting. And at first I kinda went, oh my god, but the more I thought about it, the better it sounded. Someone, when we were talking about the pool, went, pool party!
When it reopens, yes.
Yes, and I, it was.
Opening day.
And, and I was like, oh god. And I thought, what a great idea.
Of course it is.
I think the, the, one day, the first, the opening day.
Yep.
Or the, yeah, whatever.
Maybe not the opening day, maybe a week later.
No, no, no.
Well, because on opening day, if somebody who's helping man it doesn't, stuff happens.
It will not be opening day.
Yeah, stuff happens on opening day.
Yeah, the day after, no, there's too much getting the kids together and blah, 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 but the next day or the day after.
Within a while, it's after.
It's on the weekend.
It's gotta be on the weekend, yeah.
And, um, so I talked to Sally at the meeting, and, um, you know, we kinda discussed getting, um, I think Sally brought it up, uh, food trucks.
Yes.
A couple of food trucks.
Good idea.
We could get some picnic ta- you know, table, tables out there. I thought it was a great idea.
I thought it was a good idea.
And so I'd like to work with them on that.
Yeah.
Okay. So opening, opening weekend.
Open weekend, you have to pick a day.
Just, you don't, you pick a day, but it's just grand reopening of the pool, that's what I call it, and it doesn't have to be, you know, the first weekend, I would do the first weekend, get it out of the way, and may do it on the second weekend, after, after it's open.
No, because we open it up on Memorial Weekend.
Oh, never mind, okay, but then the first weekend, so we've had a few days to get any bugs out.
There won't be any bugs. That, that's what I'm saying, not the first day, but I'd like to do it on Memorial Weekend, because more people are going to be around, off of work and blah, blah, blah. I'd rather do it, uh, if we open, you know, if Memorial Weekend falls on Saturday or Sunday, we'll do it on Sunday. Uh, but we'll pick a day.
I, I agree. Just do it, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a catastrophe.
No.
No.
But, um.
Cause again, all we're doing is just saying, you know, you can come, it'll be free that day.
Yep.
And, you know, people can come and go, people can come and go, and I'm using.
Should be a good turnout, see the new pool.
Yeah, we can only have so many people in the pool at a certain time, so people are gonna have to cycle through it.
There is a limit as to the number of people in that pool.
Okay. Okay, well, so, I think that's enough.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be more than happy to work with the FPOA on that one.
Okay, well, let's, um, so we've got four events that we possibly could work with.
What's the fourth one?
The pool party, the east-west softball.
Or bocce ball.
Or Christmas tree and the Fourth of July.
Okay.
Could have both.
The bocce?
I think, I mean.
I think bocce's great, cause all ages can play it. It's, it's a great game.
And, and I don't see as many people getting hurt.
As long as they, as long as they don't start throwing the balls around.
Yeah. Oh, those, well, we, we'd have to get bocce balls, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. I know you're gonna, I'm gonna have you.
Wait a minute. Okay.
I think the FPOA has those.
Okay.
Does the FPOA have those balls?
I think they do.
We'll wait, we'll wait till, we'll wait till the end, and we can talk to you at conference.
Oh, yeah, right, it's on the agenda, okay.
Okay.
So we got that one, okay.
Okay, so that's that.
Well, we're gonna start planning this one sooner rather than later, mine anyway. What's next?
Next item is Foxfire Boulevard parking.
Ooh, can I, we, can I help talk about that?
Well, let me just start it off by saying that we've had significant changes in that neighborhood as far as development. Um, and I would like to make a proposal, not my decision, but I believe we need to remove parking from Foxfire Boulevard.
Absolutely.
So between just public safety, increased traffic, um, and, and we can do that. I mean, it's a, it's state statute one sixty A dash two ninety-six. Um, it's establishment and control of streets, centers, and edge lines, so, um.
Now, that, the street that those condos, uh, use now is that, that's our street, right?
Yes, it is.
So you wanna get them out there too?
Yes. Yes. And, um, off the boulevard as well. Because, again, our land use plan states that we're supposed to, you know, our boulevards are supposed to be, um, front and center in our, in our neighborhoods.
And Don, there is no parking in front of those condos. They either park on the boulevard or they can't park in front of their units. There's no room for cars.
No, I know there's not. So you're gonna develop that lot for parking there?
Well, they actually own two properties. They own the property in between the two units, the one that burned down, they own that. And then, as you're looking at the two units, they own a piece of property directly right next to the, and I'm gonna say the one on the left is number two. They own property right next to that one.
How many feet?
How many feet?
Yeah, how big, how big?
It's, it's pretty, it's, I don't know.
Three new houses.
I, I, well, no, it's, right, so there's condo, empty lot, condo, piece of property, and then the three homes.
Cause there are three new homes going in on that street.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's a different.
Well, and I, and I can't imagine with the new owners of the golf course thinking allowing people to park on that median is a good look. And it's not. It looks bad.
Well, and there are safety concerns as, as far as I'm concerned, um, as far as just emergency vehicles getting through there. It's, it's just not a safe place to be parking, especially with the traffic that's going to be, um.
Who owns that, uh, they can lie.
They do.
They mean which one?
It's, it's a, it's an et al, it's an, it's an et al. So.
So, next step is. So, next step is.
Well, I think, I think what we need to do is we need to, as a council, this is something we probably need to take up at our council meeting, and vote on if we agree that that's what we wanna do, and then we need to contact the, the property owner.
I think, I, I, I'm all for cleaning it up over there, but, and I hate to be the person who's like dissenting on everything tonight, but you got like, you figure you've got forty-eight, twenty-four and one, twenty-four units over there? Okay, so you figure a car and a half per unit, right, I mean, that's like thirty-six to forty cars.
Thirty-six.
And it's fine for us to say you can't park on the median, but I think before we do that, i- if, if it was me and I was the landowner over there, and I got whacked with, you can't park there anymore, and you gotta clear your lots and put in a parking lot and stuff like that, I'll tell you what's gonna happen. Number one, it's gonna cost them a fair amount of money, and number two, they're gonna pass that on in rent to the people who live there. Guaranteed, they're not gonna eat that, I mean, if you've gotta develop two lots into a parking lot, you gotta clear them, you gotta pave them, okay? So, what are you talking, thirty, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars to do it?
It's not our, it's not.
I get it, I get it's not our problem, but it's gonna impact people who live in the village, those, those guys, they're gonna pass part of that cost onto the people who rent over there.
Again, they need to provide parking for their.
Right, here's what I'm saying, I think we need to go to them ahead of time and say, this is what we're considering.
Their renters.
Oh, we discussed that, yeah.
Okay, so are we gonna talk to the property owners?
That's what I just said.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Okay, but, okay, then I'm, I'm gonna miss.
Yeah, and, and telling them what, that we would have to, we would have to notify the property owners.
Well, when you say notify, what do you mean, send them a letter, go see them?
No, I think we need to sit down with them.
We need to sit down with them too.
And explain what we are proposing.
Yeah.
Give them, and I think, um, six months timeline.
Well, I would discuss a timeline with them.
Well, if, you have to have a timeline because if not.
I agree, but I wouldn't, I, I think we should sit down with them first, and the timeline probably will present itself. And in the meantime, when the new, if the new golf course owners come in and you can't park over there anymore, you can't tell people they can't park somewhere, what are they gonna do?
Well, again.
Why is that our problem?
It's not, it's not our problem, it really isn't, because we don't provide parking for private property.
I, no, I, I understand that.
Trust me. Well, then that's the end of the conversation, really.
Well, not necessarily, because those people still need to park someplace, so are we gonna allow them to park on, on, continue to park on the boulevard for six months, or however long it takes them?
Well, you gotta, you gotta give them time.
We have to give them time, you have to give them time to figure something out, but there's, there's, I think it's something that is long overdue, and now with these homes being built, it's just.
I have no problem with changing the parking, I'm just concerned about the process that we're gonna use to get everybody up there.
Oh, we're not gonna go there and say, hey, you got thirty days to open up a parking lot, you're out, or you're out, I mean.
Right, we're changing a traffic pattern is what we're doing, and I'm sure there's gonna have to be some kind of reasonable accommodation. And they're gonna have to figure out what that is, but that's not, it's just like if, if, if they're parking on property that is not theirs.
No, I get it, it, that, that, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the process and that we make it as amiable as possible.
And, and, and we will, again, it's not gonna be, you've got thirty days, get your cars.
Where are they, where are we gonna allow people to park if the golf course says they can't park in the parking lot anymore?
They can't, no one would say those, that they're not allowed to park.
Right, I, I get it.
Yeah.
Well, they have, they have land there that can be developed for parking.
And, and you know what, clearing doesn't take that long, look at the houses that they're building right next door, they've already cleared two of those lots, I think. So you're not talking weeks to clear a piece of property, you're talking days. You bring in an asphalt company, you, and you have it cleared and leveled, you're talking maybe on the long end, a month, to get all that done, and I'm talking days to get those trees done, and then what's gonna take them longest.
They have to prepare the surface.
Correct, and that's all in there, but you bring in a paving company, they're having it done within, depending on when you can get them there, and there's a lot of companies you can call, you're not talking six months worth of time to get that project done.
I'm talking about the dollar amount, it has nothing to do with the length of the project, that's, that's very complex.
Well, you know, and unfortunately, we have gotten to the point with the village, with our growth, where, you know what, it was fine to have people parking there. We're not at that point anymore.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, as I said, the only thing I'm concerned about is the process.
And obviously so are we.
We're, we're, we're gonna have to communicate with the property owners, and of course, I'm sure they're not gonna, they're not gonna like the message, um, but we, I think we, I think it would be good for the village, for everyone in the village, to, um.
I knew if I were them and I didn't want to.
Change that traffic flow.
I sell that lot to somebody else. I'm, I'm serious, I mean.
Well, then they have no place to park their cars at all.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
They're really screwed then.
Yeah, if you wanna do that, we're gonna park your cars, so. Anyway, um.
I just did a little trigger there, they're screwed for about seventy cars in that lot.
In the middle one?
Yep.
Yeah.
They did plenty of wrong.
If you had enough room for condo, condos and area around it, yeah, and like I said, they own the side lot too, next to it.
Well, the thing, yeah, lot, it does slope off a lot, now, we want them to have a blacktop, if it does, it's gonna all, all that water, it's gonna down off towards big time.
We can, they do the blacktop, can't we?
Or you look at stone in there and then put a, put a buffer down at the bottom so it holds the water and then gradually seeps it out.
Yeah. Well, that would all have to be done by an engineer, they'd have to, they'd have to provide an engineer's plan.
Yeah.
That's gonna be more complicated than we think.
No, it's, good, I think, I, I think the bottom line for the village is, is that, well, I am proposing that we not allow parking on that boulevard, that's my, that's my recommendation, and then the council needs to either agree or disagree with that.
Agree.
And then how they get it done is really not our concern, other than controlling water runoff whenever they decide. I mean, maybe they could work out, and I'm just saying this, but I know a lot of people, you know, um, rental agreements to park their cars places, you know?
Yeah, but where would they do that, around here?
Well, if the, if the club isn't letting them park there, I don't know if, if they are.
On the triangle, on the triangle.
That's, that's a bit of a while, but again, that's still not, um, again, we do have the power.
Yeah, that would be a while. You know, and unfortunately, I don't know why they didn't think about those things when those units were in the first place.
I don't know how you could, I, I don't know how you could allow housing without parking, but that's, that's neither here nor there.
Well, that's a long time ago.
It doesn't matter, it really doesn't matter, so anyway.
I don't care.
Um, is anyone opposed to eliminate parking?
No.
On the boulevard?
On the boulevard?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, so at least we know that we have to figure out a way to communicate this, um.
I feel, I don't know what I'd do, if I was that owner, I'd go to the golf course, and I'd ask to rent that whole thing where the sand piles used to be, I would offer to rent that on a monthly basis, and you could park a lot of cars over there.
Well, and that would be between.
That would, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's an option, Warren.
And they're gonna, if, I mean, if the golf course says no, maybe they can make it for a time limit until they got their parking arrangement, and say, okay, for six months or three months or whatever, um, can we make this arrangement? And, because I'm sure they would do that.
Well, we aren't gonna, we're not gonna assume anything.
Well, we don't know that, yeah.
No, but.
Okay.
Okay, next.
So that's that. Um, Central Pines, as you all know, we were accepted into the Central Pines Council, and they offer, you know, various services to their members as far as, um, helping you, helping us with any stormwater, um, water systems, um, H, HR needs as far as like job descriptions and salary ranges and everything, so my question to the council is, um, I have some priorities that I think are important for us to go to the council with and say, can you help us? Um, one of them being, um, job class and salaries, another one is water system consulting, um, grants, well, grants are kind of a moot point since federal grants have been suspended at the moment, and the other one I have is stormwater management.
Yes.
Is there anything that you guys feel, um, I mean, and this is a list, I, I just would like to go to them with, we really want you to go, help us with this now, whether it's one or two things on the list, to me, job class and salaries is, is, is my most important concern. But do any of you have other priorities that you think?
If we got those two done, we'd be in great shape.
And what do you think, and I think if they can do water system consulting, and I, I know Warren's not here, but I know they do things like that, is that something that we want to?
It's gonna depend on cost.
Yeah.
Well, I know, for grants probably, they take, probably take a percentage of the grant, but you're right, what would the cost be for these other services?
Well, and, and everything is dependent on cost, obviously, um, but, and then the stormwater management, I think would be, is, or stormwater consulting, you know?
We would need to have their pricing for those things so we can work in the budget.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Yep.
So let me, I'll talk to them about job class and salaries.
That to me would be the most important.
It's my, my most important one, that's, that's another one.
Because that, that's gotta be a standard of the process.
If anything, we'll just start with that, because we can only do so much.
Well, right, we start with that, but I liken the ballpark to those other things, because when we get into budget, I, we got a lot of stuff coming at us.
Yeah.
Dollar wise, and so we're gonna need to get in there and really hammer up.
I will ask them, um, if they do water system consulting and, and what that cost would be.
And definitely we'll ask them.
And the stormwater.
Yes.
I've got a question, this is not on the agenda, but wasn't status on that well, pool, they did a check, they checked on it.
I don't know.
I don't either.
Warren is, Warren is sick, or not well.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he's home, but he's, um.
Oh, and he's, he's got all the info on that.
Yeah, so.
I knew they found water, but I don't know the staff.
Okay, I don't know, all right, so I am, yes, you've got things that you got, and so I will go to Central Pines with those things.
Okay, so just to kind of give you an update, um, regarding the burn in the park trails, I, there's twenty-two companies I contacted, well, a lot of my left messages, blah, 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 a lot of them don't return calls, most of them are over a hundred miles away, I actually got two people, I met with one yesterday, but he is more of a management, um, in terms of chemicals, keeping the, everything.
Oh, the undergrowth.
Yeah, more of camel, chemicals, and he, he basically said in the two loops that we would really need, first of all, to do the burn. So I had, did get through to somebody, and, um, hopefully next week he's coming down to look at it, and I think he, he mentioned, I told him we have six or seven acres over there, um, I was amazed that this guy actually said he did it, most of them were like, yeah, we don't do it anymore, don't return your phone call, you're too far away, and six acres doesn't excite us at all, you know, so.
It's too bad we can't piggyback with all of some of the larger property owners around here.
Yeah, well.
I wonder if we need burns.
I don't know, but this guy said, probably the one guy that I'm hopefully meeting with next week, maybe eight hundred dollars to do.
Oh, God.
Is it burn?
Yeah. And, and he's coming over a hundred miles, so.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, yeah, I'm telling you, most of them are like, yeah, I don't do it anymore.
They're gonna have a fire department close by.
And, and, and I had to assure them that our fire department would be there.
Oh, sure.
So, anyway, but, so, yeah, we're kind of getting to that point now, hopefully, um, that will have to be next fiscal year's budget, though.
Yeah, what time of year is, you do it in the fall?
Well, one guy said, well, I can put you on the list for next winter, I went, yeah, I'd like to have a little sooner than that, so thank you very much. But I think I can get this guy here.
Spring?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, or sooner, um, okay, the septic tank at the park, unfortunately, and, did I bring you guys up to speed with that?
You put a new tank in?
No, that's going at the pool.
That's cool.
Okay, so we did finally locate where the septic tank is at the park.
Where is it?
It's under all the pavers. Yeah, don't get me going, so, um, the pavers have to come up, not, we're gonna take off half. Then he'll have to dig it up, cause it's about four feet down, he needs to see the viability of the tank, uh, so he's gonna have to dig it all up, and, um, but yeah, so yeah, it's under the pavers, and we may have to, you know how there's a sidewalk around it? Some of that sidewalk may have to come out depending on how big the tank is.
How big the tank is, so what are we talking for dollars?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, oh, yeah. The tank itself, i- if it's intact, all we're looking at is.
Pumping it.
Pumping it.
Pumping, yeah.
And, you know, putting in some flowers or whatever, putting the, we can't put that dirt back on top of it, though, it is packed in there. They literally packed it with earth, and, uh.
With the pavers, you know, for painting.
And then the pavers, so yeah, and we still haven't figured out where the lids are, so that's why those pavers have to come out.
Good planning. Good planning.
Well, I think because the, the drawing had it in a different location.
Yeah.
Yeah, how, how did county talk their way out of that?
Well, and I asked, uh, somebody at the county about that, and they're like, well, you never know how these things happen, I mean, great, it's.
Well, I know how it happens, somebody put it in the wrong place on the map.
I, I'm like, you know, because I'm looking at, we have the drawing as to where it should be, and it's not anywhere close. So, anyway, if that tank is intact, and we do have to figure out if it's intact, cause it hasn't been emptied since two thousand and six, and the guy almost fell over when I told him that, um.
He ordered himself a hazmat, so.
Yeah, yeah, you know what, the, the one good thing that I can say in both the park and the pool is if your septic tank is really leaking, you'll, you'll know.
You'll know, that's true.
You can smell it, so there is no smell up there, so our leach field should be fine, um, but yeah, um, so I'll find out more after we get the pavers up, we're gonna save those pavers and possibly use them.
Put them back down.
No, can't, no, we can't put them back down, um, so we'll have to do some, yeah, let's do that.
Well, cover it up again.
And, and we have to get on a schedule at least for every two years to have these septic tanks emptied.
Yeah.
And, um, okay, so.
Bathrooms?
Bathrooms at the pool, uh, they are putting in the drains, and it's all torn apart right now, but they should be done by next Wednesday or so, that's good. Yeah, it's looking nice.
What are they doing inside the pool today?
Uh, power washing.
Power washing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it?
That's all I have, all right.
Moving on to public comment for items that were listed on the agenda.
I think we're gonna have Sally come up and talk about bocce balls.
Sally, do you have anything, do you have anything you wanna add?
We're making you get up there.
Do I need to tell you who I am?
Yes, you do.
Well, well.
Here you go, speak up.
Um, Sally Conlick, and I live at One Ridge, right. So there is bocce balls in the storage unit, I don't know how many there is, but there has been pretty people that have been here a long time, who have been bringing, bringing it up, that they wanna do bocce ball, so, um, it's probably a good thing that we bring them out to use them. I mean, you could do bocce ball in fourth of July.
Yeah.
That's where they used to do it.
Did you?
Cause it's not a, um, you don't use a lot of effort, like, you can't play softball in July.
Right, it's too high.
You'll pass out.
Well, how many bocce balls do you need to play bocce ball?
I don't know.
Uh, there's six, right?
I think it's three, I used, well, it's.
Three or four on each team.
But there's sets of them, you know what I mean, I think what they said they used to do is they would have several games, and it would be competitions, so it would be like.
East, west.
I think they used to have three, I think they used to have three.
Is that what you had?
And I think there's three balls, they get three down and three come back, it's a total of three in each one.
They're different colors, three. Yeah.
I have no idea how. I have no idea how that works.
Okay, well, we can investigate that.
The little Pauline that you're shooting for.
I do need to get in there to put some stuff in there so we can count them.
And the sets aren't really that expensive. You can buy them, yeah.
Ebay or Marketplace.
We don't have no more room for more, so whatever.
No, I mean, if somebody has a set, they could, they could bring a set, you know, at home. I used to have one, but I left it in Connecticut.
See, she just had to play. We'll just have to ask her.
Yeah.
Oh, it's fun. And it's very...
I have no idea how to play it.
And the kids can, can be just as good as adults, so...
Well, it's a tough game.
Especially on the lawn.
Yeah, bombs, bombs all over. It's a park, it was even worse.
Do we have to set up a meeting to discuss all these things or you guys not discuss it amongst and how you wanna...
Well, I, I think, why don't, my suggestion is, okay, I'll take ownership of the pool party and meet with you guys. Someone else, what else did we have? We had...
We had the east-west softball.
And the bocce ball. I, you know what? I'm, I'm a little nervous about the softball thing, sorry.
I'd rather, I'd rather eliminate softball and say bocce ball. I think it's gonna be easier organized. The teams are easier, it's just simpler.
And, and, I, I just don't want these people that are on, yeah, I'm, I'm twenty-five, but I'm really eighty. Um, you know...
I've had a few extra beers and I'm for sure I'm eighty and I'm thinking of...
But you know, they hid that beer in the reality before they played, right? Okay. Um, so why don't we like, sit down and pick a, I'll do the pool party.
Oh, oh, oh. Go ahead, I wanna ask a question.
Um, so, you know, somebody wants to take ownership of the bocce ball. Somebody wants to take ownership, uh, if, well, we can do that.
I'll do the bocce ball, 'cause that'll be fourth to, unless someone else wants to do it.
Well, you're fine.
You're not, oh, okay. Okay, and what else? Okay, the Christmas tree lighting, I think a couple of us could sit down with you guys.
Yeah, a couple of us. I, I would do the Christmas tree lighting. I'll do it with somebody. I'm...
You want Warren? If you're not here, you get nominated.
Well, Warren is up for election, so he may not, I mean, he's, we don't know. Well, that's November. He, he can work on it.
Well, yeah.
'Cause it'll be all planned before November.
Yeah, okay. So Warren and, um, Mary.
It might not all be a plan before, 'cause it's not gonna happen until before the December. Yeah, you can, you can...
Or I could help.
You guys can figure that out.
Fourth of July.
Okay, so we're all good then, right? Oh, we got a Christmas tree lighting. That's Warren and Mary. Warren and Mary, okay.
We'll, we'll volunteer Warren.
Yeah, that's what we said.
And then I'll do, um, fourth of July.
So we're scratching softball, so it's only three events.
That should be good.
Did we do, okay, so did we do a car, a kids carnival this year?
They do.
They did, and it was, well, I wasn't there. I haven't been there both times, but everybody complained that the games fell apart, the, um...
'Cause the first year was a big hit.
Yeah, I don't know what, what went wrong. I wasn't there, so I can't, I can't comment.
And do you do the Easter egg hunt in the park?
Yes.
That'd be a good one for us to roll in on.
So the Easter egg hunt is pretty simple. We do the, um, up on the hill there is for the younger kids. And we have the youngest go and then, and then we hide down the trail and to the left. And we have like, we put a cone where it stops so they only can go so far and it only goes three feet in from the trail for the older kids.
Okay.
And, um, a lot of people returned our eggs. We just have to buy a little bit more eggs and then we have to fight. We don't, we bought candy the first year. The chocolate melts really easy, so... I did non-chocolate candy last year.
Good deal.
Because you put it out there and in two hours, it's cold, it's cold.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's not, um, up north. It's down here. Everything else.
You learned the hard way on that one, huh?
Yeah. It was like, ah, this, I seen people opening up and it was just like...
Okay, I bet you those kids ate it.
They did. So the first year Sue said like, made those two houses and she raffled them off. Like she made candy houses, like a gingerbread house, but they were made of candy.
Wow.
And she raffled them off. You could do something like that. You could get some, you know, have raffles of stuff to...
So that's something you guys would organize?
Yeah, we do that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Mary, do you wanna take Easter?
No. I don't. And I'll, I'll get somebody to do it.
We'll just let them do it.
Yeah, let that one go.
Okay.
Cool.
Yeah, so we will be in touch on, on who we can work with or how we can help you guys or if, if you would like to ask us questions, you know, get with Lisa if we're not around, or email, whatever.
Well, you've got my phone number.
Yeah, we are meeting on Tuesday and people are going to be assigned to the events. So there will be different people that will run the events. So we're having that at my house on Tuesday. So that's what we're discussing is what events are you gonna work on?
Is that on the fourth? February fourth?
Is that what Tuesday is?
Yeah, I think that is Tuesday.
Yeah, it's at my house. So we're having a...
What time?
Four o'clock.
Four?
Yeah. So, so we're gonna be discussing which event each person is gonna be doing and then we could have another meeting after that. 'Cause we have a meeting at five thirty. We have, um, one of our Ellen Foxer people is an artist and she's volunteering to do zip and paint at her house. It would be a smaller amount of people and, um, less money and real art. It would take more than one session. So she would do it multiple times for different people. So she's gonna stop it over too. So we're gonna pick out events. We're definitely doing these events. Confirming these are the dates so that we can get them to you guys. And when you guys were talking, um, these permits, the F P O A has never filled out the permit when we're using the park. Should we be filling it out? We do provide the insurance.
Well, we have your insurance policy.
Yeah, you have our insurance policy, but should we always fill it?
Probably because we wanna make sure that it's not being rented by somebody else.
You always tell us when they are.
We do, but we never fill that.
It probably would be a good idea, especially with the new employees that we have. I think it would be, it would be awful if we double rented something.
Can I keep that too?
Right, and then we usually do the permit for the signs.
I got it, I got it. Yes, and that goes to Lisa.
And we usually put them up a month ahead of time.
Well, you know what? You may not fill this out, but it is filled out. When you guys tell us when...
We probably fill it out.
Yes, 'cause I've always seen them with the F P O A, um, yeah, so someone fills it out in the office. 'Cause I've seen them filled out with names. Um, but yeah, we definitely have to have these.
We'll just fill them out. Lisa has enough work to do.
Okay.
Okay.
So, cool.
Um, so you, you know what? I would suggest, once you find out who's gonna be in charge of each event...
We'll send out the list.
To Lisa, yeah, and she can disseminate that to the rest of us.
Unless we'll figure something out.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
No worries.
Any other comments or questions?
I have nothing.
Personnel policy, we're not gonna, we were gonna...
It's not on the agenda.
No, I didn't get it back on that.
Oh, I thought we were just gonna look at it and then talk about it.
That's what I thought too. Okay, that's all right. I just noticed that it was...
We can do it next time. Yeah, I, that's why I didn't really spend a lot of time on it. Sorry.
Okay. All right, okay, yes.
Introduce yourself.
Sally.
No, I'm just kidding.
Sally Conliff.
This is a non-F P O A question.
Was it something that was on the agenda?
Yeah, it's the use of the park.
Oh, okay.
Cornhole team, the cornhole people. Should they be filling out that special use?
Okay, let's talk about that.
Well, let me, let me say something.
Or maybe you put it on another.
Let me, if, if someone is at the park and they're at the park and if they're not, if they're not renting the, um, the facility, they don't need to fill out a form, but the park is from dawn to dusk and that's it.
Right.
So if they're there from dawn to dusk and they're not taking over the pavilions, um, well, actually, they could be in the...
They, they, okay, they can use the pavilions. The reason, if they, let's say for whatever reason, they want the lights, they want the fans...
Then they have to rent it.
Then they have to rent it and then they'd have to fill it out. But as a resident, you can use the park anytime you want. But keep in mind, if someone has come to the village and reserved the pavilion for that day, and I think you switched it to Fridays?
No, they were doing it Wednesday, then they changed it to Friday, but I don't know.
Okay, either day.
I have no idea what it's gonna be.
Okay, whatever day it is, if someone comes to the village, 'cause they're technically not renting the park.
Correct.
If someone rents the park, they will not be allowed to use, let, some people rent one pavilion, some people rent both. Um, if they're both rented, you guys have to, they have to stay away from the pavilions because those people have paid to use it.
How much is it to rent one of them?
Okay, so I think it's twenty for a resident. I'm gonna just do it on my list. There it is. It's, um, a single shelter is twenty-five dollars for three hours.
The reason I'm asking is, in the middle of the summer, when it's super hot, to turn the fans on maybe or plug them in and they might wanna rent. So I'll give it to the, to them to...
Yeah.
They...
And it's, yeah, it's an additional ten dollars for each additional hour after that. And, and the, the plus side of that is the dawn to dusk doesn't apply. It would be pushed to nine o'clock, that they could stay until nine o'clock.
Which in the summer is almost dusk anyway.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, they, you know, they're there in September and October.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, they could, I mean, they pay three dollars a game, they could make it four dollars a game and pay for the rental. That way they don't have to worry about that.
But, but, but again, I mean, what they have to understand is as a resident, they can go up there and use the park anytime they want.
Correct. Cool, good to know.
Thank you. All right, last call. Any other comments from the audience? Done? Okay, meeting, oh, motion to adjourn?
I made a motion, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned at five fifty.